Ready for work. So you may notice that many of us have these new fancy technical gadgets up here. We are getting our materials. Well, not Nancy.
How did Mike get? Why did Mike get mine?
Kate.
All right. Well, let's keep going.
Okay, okay. Kate's, Nancy's back in the 20th century. The rest of us are struggling in the 21st century. But these are new and there are some glitches, so bear with us as we try to go through the computer and, you know, follow what's going on in our materials. So, let's start off with any public comment. I know we're late. I apologize for that, but we had an important executive session. We don't have any listed people for public comment, but if anyone's interested in, you don't have to say something if you don't want to.
Deborah Brown, Precinct One. Over the course of the summer, there was yet another decision in favor of Gerald Austin. And I know that you all have a secure counsel to assess and evaluate, you know, the review of that case, but I would implore you, as a resident of Brookline, to strongly consider settling this case. When I say settle it, I don't mean with a low-ball number. I mean with a reasonable number that would create a sense of the plaintiff feeling like he is whole and to show good faith, continue to show good faith in correcting some of the things that caused this debacle to happen in the first place. So, thank you.
And maybe you can intercede on our behalf with the plaintiff and his attorney to help move this along.
Well, you know, things-
I didn't mean to get into conversation back and forth, but just, you know, make that point.
Well-
Takes two to ten.
And my point is that it's, in this instance, it may be too on the terms of the litigation, but I think that, I think most of the residents that are in this room from Brookline would agree that the price of this litigation has been extremely heavy for all of us, not just in terms of the dollar figures, but just emotionally and in terms of reputation, so.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Question of approving the minutes of August 6, 2019. Do anyone have any, board members have corrections, edits? I have a few minor edits, typo type things. Okay, all in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, question of approving a change order in the amount of $17,000 related to the contract, PW 19-16, traffic safety improvements at the intersection of Hammond Road, Hammond Street, and Woodland Road. Mr. Papa Sturgeon?
Yes, Andrew Papa Sturgeon, Commissioner of Public Works. This is an amendment to an existing contract with World Tech Engineering, contract PW 19-16. This is for the design of traffic improved, traffic and safety improvements at the intersection of Hammond Street and Woodland Road in South Brookline. This contract has been underway for quite some time and at the direction of the Transportation Board and after many, many public hearings and meetings, they directed us to have our design engineer look at some additional cycle tracks along Hammond Street and also take a look at the, at the stretch on Hammond Street between Heat Street and Horace James Circle. In other words, to broaden the area of the, of the design, to analyze traffic impacts for both Horace James Circle and the Hammond Heat Street intersection, which I'm sure many of you know is very problematic. This extra work order directs our contractor, our design contractor to do that. It's for $17,000. This project will be hopefully in the CIP for FY '21 for construction after we get the final plans approved hopefully sometime this winter.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Next, question of approving and executing contract PW 2009, Stedman Street improvements in the amount of $81,183.45 with Mario Sousa and Company.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is to complete the road improvements on Stedman Street where we left off from the school construction. This contract will mill and overlay the pavement from where we left off at the school construction to where the road intersects Manchester Road. It will also include the intersection of Beals, Gibbs, and Stedman, that very large intersection. It will include sidewalk reconstruction work, milling and overlaying of the pavement, wheelchair ramp constru-, and wheelchair ramp construction, and of course then restriping with pavement markings. It's a fairly small contract in the grand scheme of things. It's for $81,183.45.
Any questions? Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, next, a very interesting series of items. Question of approving and authorizing the chair to execute the following fiscal year 2020 CDBG subrecipient agreements. I'm gonna go very quickly. Counsel on Aging for $34,005. Brooklyn Community Mental Health Center, two contracts, $34,670, three contracts, $43,673, and $30,641. As for comprehensive services for children and families, adolescent outreach and facility improvements, including energy-efficient HVAC installations. Then, Steps to Success, Work Connection Youth Training Program, $61,707, or $17. Brookline Housing Authority, Brookline ESOL Program, which is a language program, I think primarily for adults, English language program. Next Steps Program and BHA Resident Security Project. Those are $13,695, $10,785, $435,850 respectively. Next, Brookline Public Schools Parent Child Home Program, $7,145. And Brookline Improvement Coalition, funded for safety and energy efficiency improvements of $59,250. Before Mr. Vail speaks, I wanted to say, you may recall, those of us who are old enough, that CBD, CDBG block grants are something that Richard Nixon gave us as part of his efforts to shut down federal government support for local initiatives and local programs. Put all those funds into one bucket, cut them drastically and said, "Here, we can give you these block grants. You do with it what you want within certain parameters, of course." That's the history of CDBG block grants. We have, and I'm sure most towns and cities across the country have, and states, have used these funds nonetheless for good programs, even though not all the programs that we need money for, but for important programs. And I urge people who have access to the materials on our website to, to review some of these grants. There are, in Section B, these are sort of template federal grant applications, but in Section B 1, there's a description of the program, which is very, very interesting. Tells you what type of programs we're funding here. And these are really good programs. And Section B 4 2, I think, that talks about what outcomes are expected, what we're expecting to receive once, you know, the program is completed. I see the programs that we have listed here as giving substance to Brookline's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's all, it was all long good to talk about that, but these programs provide the language services, the youth support services, the preparation for the job market services that make our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion real, because it gives people who are recipients of these programs a way into the job world, a way into integration into our community. So, these are great programs. That's all I have to say.
I agree with every word. These are all great programs. There are, this year, there are 10 subrecipients. Most of those are for public services that, they serve clientele primarily low and moderate income, a wide array of services. There are also three contracts for capital improvements for programs such as the Brookline Improvement Coalition, the Brookline Housing Authority, and even the Brookline Center, who's doing some energy efficiency work. So, again, all these projects, primarily, they're geared to serve low and moderate income folks across town. They're centered on things that, resident security, resident safety, energy efficiency, all good projects that we should be looking to fund as a community. As you'll recall, we were actually here in June. I know the select board had the opportunity to vote on our fiscal year 2020 CDBG annual action plan. We're actually hoping for your vote this evening so we can actually execute all these contracts and, and get our, our many subrecipients underway as they look to deliver these many services and programs and capital improvements. So with that, I'm hopeful that the, the board will vote to authorize the chair to execute all these agreements and, and let us move forward with our fiscal year 20, program year.
Great. Any questions? Comments? Observations? We're not taking comments on this.
I think there's something, I see. Are all the contracts included?
All of the contracts are included, yes.
Do you have children's hospital? What did you do about?
I don't believe we have a contract with Children's Hospital through the block grant program.
I remember them in May. I don't know what happened to them.
Could you check that and necessarily we can sign it next week?
So, I chair the advisory board on this, that reviews all the applications, and I don't remember seeing an application from Children's Hospital. There was a, there was a portion of, of the Brookline Place Improvement that went to the demolition of the pedestrian bridge, but that wasn't CDBG. And then reflecting back on May, there was a warrant article around the extension of a overhang, a building overhang, onto, onto Pearl Street. But again, that's in this general area, but not, not a CDBG item.
Okay. Ms. Heller?
No, I think we should, you know, they're all worthy projects. I think we should approve them.
Could you make one correction?
Sure.
In five of these projects, the, the agreement uses the date 2074 instead of 1974 as the date of the-
Program inception.
CDBG inception.
Yep.
Two of them don't. I don't say that just to show that I read them, but it sort of jumped out at me.
We'll make that correction.
Okay. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question of approving change order number two, in the amount of $17,800 with Desmond Design Management in connection with Water Department Garage. Masak?
Yes, Ray Masak, Building Department. This is a design amendment. Last year, we did a partial, we did a design for partial slab repair of the Water Department Garage. We received bids and the bids were over budget. I asked the Water Department, Department Head, to get additional funding. He did go before town meeting, got additional funding to do the full garage floor repair. And this is delta between the original amendment and this amendment is to do full slab repair. If you've been over to the water garage, you'll, you would have noted that the slab, the slab is in very poor condition.
Okay, any questions? More approval, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Let's see, I think you're up on the next few, too. Question of approving amendments related to the guaranteed maximum price services for Brookline High School project, Wescanska USA Building. Two amendments, number six, in the amount of $41,000, $4,141,276. And amendment number seven, in the amount of $7,197,850. Mr. Masak? Sorry, do you want to go through all of them?
I'll be very quick.
No, no, I'm sorry, that's the only one that's you.
Guaranteed maximum price, six, is for elevators, below-grade waterproofing, site work, and elevators. These are called pre-guaranteed maximum price. They're early bid packages, which allow the project to continue, move ahead on, to be on schedule, hopefully. And pre-GMP amendment seven had to do with the Cypress Building structural steel, elevator modernization, elevator alternates, and the site work allowances for the new Stedman.
Any questions? All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Next, this is a nice one. Question of accepting a gift in the amount of $90,000 from Mrs. Nancy Hunter to be used for the benefits of Brookline veterans at the discretion of the Veteran Fair as Officer Mr. McQuarrie. Tell us something about the donor and some of the ideas you have for using this really great gift.
Good evening, everyone. This is, it's sad that we've lost Nancy, but she was a really, really wonderful lady. Her husband was a Navy retiree. He lived on Brook, off of Beacon Street. When the family had a health crisis, our office stepped in to help and were able to get him transferred from a private facility to a veterans' facility, which financially was important to her, but more importantly, provided a better level of care for him. And we assisted him along the way. Sadly, Mrs. Hunter fell a few years ago and ended up in assisted living herself, and when she passed, she was kind enough to think of our Veterans Office and what we did for her family and agreed a sum of $100,000. I believe the lawyers hit a little bit of it, so we ended up with $90,000, which is greatly appreciated. Normally, we don't spend a lot of things on material things, because we try to put everything back to veterans and do 1-1-5 benefits and those kind of things. A couple of the ideas, and I passed a few by Mr. Kleckner already, is I'd like to look at the feasibility of getting a lift van, a small one. Right now, sometimes when veterans can't get to the VA, I take them in my pickup truck, but, you know, I've carpeted the back of my truck so it doesn't scratch your chair and I've got to step, but I still have to help them get in. It would be better if we had a dedicated vehicle to that, so I would like to look at the price and the feasibility of that. And I also spoke to Commissioner Papa Sturgeon, who would take on the responsibility of maintaining it, and he's also at least provisionally agreed to look into that with me. I greatly appreciate that. I looked at the Civil War Monument across from the VFW post on the library grounds, and it, last time it was restored was about 21 years ago, and it's starting to tarnish again, and this is money that I normally wouldn't take out of my budget, so it might be nice if we actually did a restoration on that. And the restorations are, from what I understand, better now, so it would last for decades if we were to do a touch-up now. On a very selfish note, we've not changed office furniture since I got there 15 years ago, and I got there, it was junk. It's more junk now. You know, it-
Antique junk.
It's not even antique junk, so I think we're actually gonna buy-
Just junk here.
It's just junk, yeah. I don't have, I don't have any more foam on my arms or my chair, that kind of thing. So, I don't normally would spend money that we could use on veterans for that, but since this is money we didn't see, I think I'm gonna look into some office furniture. And by the same thing, we utilize the veterans' posts for our coalations, and our tables and chairs are falling apart, so I may look into the feasibility of getting some tables and chairs, so our coalations are able to continue without people falling down, because our chairs broke, so.
And they're very well attended.
And they are very well attended. And it's a nice thing for the community across the board. If you haven't gone down there, they're doing a Jazz Night on Friday nights. It's really a neat thing for the community. It really, really is. It's, I'm very excited about it. It's a great use for the hall. And the caveat to the same people that run the Jazz Night on Friday nights, two kids down the hall on Sunday afternoons. So I sneak down on Sundays when I come into town and listen to the kids play, and it's really just to give them practice, and I guess the acoustics in our lower hall are great, so it's, it's a nice event. But we have $90,000, and I'd like to look at some feasibilities, and of course, I'll run everything past Mr. Kleckner and the board of, my board is basically the American Legion and the VFW board, so I'll run everything past them also before we do any spending.
Great. Does, is Hunter having family that we could express our-
Unfortunately, when her husband passed, she was already predeceased by her brother and her parents, and there were no other family available. So I actually was her medical proxy to the time she died, because she had nobody. And it happens with a number of people in the community. If you outlive your family, sometimes I have to step in as the only person available.
Well, I want to express my appreciation for all the work you do for veterans and for the town, and this is an example of how good deeds result in good deeds to you. So, thank you for, for that.
More than welcome. Thank you.
So, any other, any questions?
If I could just add, thank you also for helping to express the ongoing needs that you have as well, and maybe others like myself can, can help cover that, the 10K that the lawyers peeled off the top there. Maybe we can help cover some of that. But I, I think what you've expressed here is, A, that you're doing really great work, then it is, that it is supported by, by the community and that people really appreciate the work you're doing, but also that there are ongoing needs, and maybe we can, we can help with that as a community.
I really appreciate it. And to the credit, the Board of Selectmen has always, select persons have always been immensely supportive of our veterans, and we have the funding we need. And I've worked in other communities, that doesn't happen every place, so I can't tell how much I appreciate you also. Thank you.
I'll join the, the chorus of thanks, both to Mrs. Hunter and also to you, Mr. McQuarrie. I've had the pleasure of attending a number of coalations and, and celebrations, remembrances over the years that you've put on, and have been impressed at every opportunity you've had to witness your work, so thank you. I've got a, sort of a technical question. We're gonna set up a trust fund for this $90,000?
I think it's a special account.
Okay.
Covered under the statute.
Okay.
Okay, any other-
Keep it, keep it up.
Okay, thank you. Our guest, thank you very much.
Okay. Let me take a vote, right?
Yes.
So, all in favor of accepting the gift of $90,000 from Mrs. Nancy Hunter, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Question of granting a temporary wine and malt beverages license to Olive Connection to be held on Wednesday, September 18, 2019, for a retail event. And let's, let's sort of combine that with the question of granting a temporary wine and malt beverage sales license to the Brookline Community on Aging. I think that's Community Aging Network?
Uh huh.
Yeah, okay. So, any questions? I think, oh, I'm sorry, we have, we have a couple more. Temporary all kinds beverages sales license to the Hellenic Association of Boston, Friday, September 21st and September 28th, for wedding reception and a cathedral festival. And question of granting temporary all kinds beverages non-sales license to the Lawrence Anderson Auto Museum for September 14, a wedding reception, September 16, a corporate dinner, September 21, a wedding reception, and September 28, a wedding reception also. Okay, I think those are the only temporary licenses. Any questions? Have all of them received police and, and other approvals?
The Police Department's reviewed all of these temporary applications and sees no reason to oppose any of them.
Okay, good. Any questions?
No.
Okay, all in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Question of approving the application of alternate managers, Amy Goodrich and Kimberly Rendam, for trustees of Boston University doing business at WBUR located at 890 Commonwealth Avenue. I assume they don't have to be here?
That's right.
And any questions? Game of approval, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And next, here's another really nice item on our agenda. Proclamation, the Boston House. Question of adopting a proclamation honoring the Boston House, 229 Kent Street, Brookline. You may, some of you may know that the Boston House used to be the Ronald McDonald House, and they are being recognized at an event on Saturday for 40 years in business and doing a very, very important service to the community, especially to those families with children receiving services and assistance at Children's Hospital. And I guess other hospitals, too.
Dana Farber.
Dana Farber, okay, sorry.
Oh, both.
Oh, both, okay. That's what I thought, so. Anyway, do we have the proclamation?
Yes.
Oh, right, right in front of me. The Boston House, whereas the Boston House, hope and healing for children with cancer, provides a home away from home for families with children being treated for cancer at Boston Children's Hospital and Dana Farber Cancer Institute's Jimmy Fund Clinic. And, whereas, since opening its doors at 229 Kent Street in Brookline on September 7, 1979, as a Ronald McDonald House, the Boston House has continuously served thousands of such families from New England, across the nation, and around the world, providing an atmosphere of caring and support where families can share common problems during times of extreme stress. And whereas, the Boston House is owned and operated by Children's Oncology Services of Massachusetts Incorporated, a nonprofit organization that is supported by doctors and other medical personnel, local foundations, corporations, and individuals, family members of children with cancer, and hundreds of volunteers who have provided countless hours of service as well as financial support. And whereas, on Saturday, September 7, 2019, the Boston House will be officially celebrating its 40th anniversary. And whereas, it is appropriate that all Brookline residents recognize the important services provided by the Boston House. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Select Board of the Town of Brookline does hereby proclaim September 7, 2019, as the Boston House Hope and Healing for Children with Cancer Day. And it be it further resolved that the Select Board commend the Boston House Hope and Healing for Children with Cancer for its 40 years of continuous outstanding support for children with cancer and their families. To be signed by all five members of the Select Board. So, any comments? This is a great opportunity to recognize an important institution that's helping many families in, in our area and across the world, around the world. That's, that's, I guess that they live in Brookline, they probably don't need your services, but-
Actually don't qualify.
Okay, okay, now I learned something.
When people come from afar.
So when people come from afar, they have, have a place to, to rest and, and relieve some of the stress of the reason why they're, they're here, so. Any comments?
I'll, I'll just exercise a little bit of personal privilege. I, I went to the Lawrence Elementary School, which is just down the street, and during my time, there was a strong partnership between the Boston House and that elementary school. And have vivid memories of not only going to what was then the Ronald McDonald House to provide a little bit of help and support, but also the families who were staying temporarily at the Boston House would, would come to the elementary school to get their education, either- would, would come to the elementary school to, uh, get their education, either the patients themselves or their family members. So, um, this is a, uh, a proclamation that's near and dear to my heart and, um, and, um, doing great work, uh, for the past forty years. And hopefully you'll do it for, uh, forty more plus.
Unless we solve the cancer riddle and, and we don't need it. Well, I, uh, your story about Lawrence School, um, I mean, is, is a nice story. It sort of illustrates how, you know, many of our schools, schools in the district reach out to, um, institutions like the Boston House and, and really provide, um, services to you as well as you provide services to us in terms of giving kids an opportunity to, um, do good for others. I mean, it's been a really important part of the educational process, so.
Well, I wanna thank the Board.
Would you like to go up to our microphone so that you can appear on our, on our TV program? I'm told we have a vast TV audience.
My name is Hank Shafran. I actually have been a Brookline resident for thirty-six or thirty-seven years. Uh, this is Barbara Lighthizer, who also is a board member of the House. Barbara and I were there together forty years ago when the house opened. And we look forward to being there Saturday for the fortieth anniversary. And I just wanna thank the Board for their support. The Town of Brookline has been absolutely phenomenal from the day we opened. When we need something and we go to the town, they say yes. And for that, we are very grateful.
Well said. Uh, thank you. And that was a great, uh, personal anecdote. We appreciate your support since you were a child at the Lawrence School.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, select person, uh, Heather Hamilton and I will appear at your event and to give support and, um, support from the town.
And we appreciate that as well, too. Thank you.
We'll see you both on Saturday. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, thanks.
And we will bring a signed proclamation.
Okay.
We've got a vote.
Yep. Bear with me. Uh, all in favor of, uh, approving the proclamation for the Boston House, uh, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. So, uh, Personnel Recreation, question of authorizing the filling of the following five vacancies within the Recreation Department. Curriculum Coordin- Curriculum Coordinator, lead teacher, two of them, Recreation Leader and Lead Teacher. I guess it's seventy-five percent of full-time, okay. Ms. Jackson?
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Green. I am, I'm here tonight to ask for your authorization to hire these positions. They are instrumental, um, at the beginning of the school year, as you can imagine, with the lead teacher positions in SUL, our early childhood education center. And, um, we are hoping tonight that we can get the authorization to hire for the Curriculum Coordinator, the two lead teachers in FY twenty, the Recreation Leader is a replacement for Sarah Nelson. This person is in charge of Brookline Day, um, all of the, uh, active older adult programming and health and wellness programming at Recreation. And then the Lead Teacher, that is the seventy-five percent position.
Any questions? Uh, I talked to Ms. Jackson, uh, a few days ago regarding ensuring that the, uh, the, the network of people that, uh, are, are considered for these positions is broad and diverse. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure that that will be the case. We talked about reaching out, for example, to community colleges, uh, which I think are a really great source for potential, um, applicants to these programs. And, uh, she runs a very good ship there, and, and I'm very confident that we'll have a diverse, uh, uh, group of potential candidates as well as, uh, diverse final hires, so.
Just wanted to ask, are we looking good for Brookline Day?
We're looking really good. Actually, I was gonna add on, I have your VIP passes right here.
Oh.
Um, we are, we're looking very good for Brookline Day. We're excited. Uh, the planning is, is about ninety-two percent there.
All right.
So we've got a couple weeks to go. September twenty-second, Sunday, eleven AM to three PM, and, uh, and we look good.
And the Brookline Water Wagon is gonna be out there?
Yes, I have to talk to Andy about that, but yep, there's a nod. It's there. We'll all be there and, uh, and very excited to be. You're all invited. I am gonna leave some information for you with Kate and your VIP passes.
Thanks.
I appreciate the fact that you also make available, uh, sunblock.
Yes.
At an event where, you know, that was made available for people. Uh, even I need sunblock. I learned that the hard way, um, so, you know, so much appreciated, so.
We even have your sunblock chapstick this year.
Oh, okay. I'm working on my. So, um, any other questions? Uh, move approval, all in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Personnel, Parks and Open Space, question of authorizing the filling of the following vacancy within the Parks and Open Space Department, Park Ranger, Mr. Pappas Sturgeon.
Uh, this is a vacancy in the Parks and Open Space Division of Public Works. This vacancy exists because of a new position that was put in the budget in FY twenty, uh, called our Code Enforcement Visitor Services Supervisor, uh, which was a new position in, uh, uh, FY twenty, uh, that fortunately was filled internally by our existing Park Ranger. Uh, so we did advertise, uh, both internally and externally for the code enforcement position, uh, and, uh, ended up hiring Alexandra Cassie, who was our existing Park Ranger. So due to that promotion, uh, we are now before you to get authorization to fill the vacancy for the Town's Park Ranger. We're gonna do a dual, uh, a dual recruitment process on this by posting both internally and advertising externally at the same time, hopefully so we get a very large pool of candidates. Um, it is, you know, park-specific work involves enforcement, involves, uh, developing nature programs and working very closely with the public, uh, as our face, uh, to those that are using our Parks and Open Space. So, we're very interested in getting this position filled as soon as possible.
What type of, um, colleges, uh, provide training for Park Ranger? I mean, those law enforcement parts, what, what are there?
I, I think that there is a component that involves law enforcement, uh, but I think that there's a bigger component, uh, of, uh, environmental concerns, uh, you know, and, uh, ecology, things of that nature. So, i- it's a kind of a difficult position to fill. You're looking for a specific, a person with very specific talents. Uh, and, uh, and we're hoping that we can find somebody that will do as good a job as our current, uh, Ranger did. He was, uh, worked very well with the public and, and put forth a great face for us.
In terms of education, is that a, like, four-year degree, um, position? Or is that a, uh, community college level position?
Well, I can tell you.
I, I would know this, except I can't get into my new twenty-first century tablet, so.
This, this, this position requires a bachelor's degree in environmental education, natural sciences or other related fields, two or more years of professional related experience in parks and natural resource management, and one year of administrative experience or a quote, a combination of education experience. So, uh, requires a, uh, a driver's license, of course, a certification in CPR and first aid, and, uh, other general requirements of all, uh, employees.
Okay, any other questions?
Looks like they also oversee the Green Dog Program as well.
Yes, yes.
Very important program.
It is.
My dog will be very happy if it continues.
Okay, um, move approval, uh, on favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Personnel, Town Administrator's Office, are you?
I'll take, I'll handle that. If you don't mind, I'll remain at my chair. But this is a position, um, in, uh, the Town Administrator and Select Board's office, uh, most recently, uh, vacated by Margie Lally, who went off to work at the Commonwealth. Um, I was very fortunate to have Ms. Patty Parks come out of retirement for, for the summer. And I'm really appreciative of her doing that, but she's moving back into retirement. And so, um, I'd like to hire this position. Um, in the past, we've sort of looked at internal promotions, but we're, we're looking, uh, we changed the title a little bit to Administrative Services Director. And we're going out to see what, what's out there, um, for this position. It's a very key position for me personally, but also serves as, uh, the liaison from the Board to this office. And, um, so, uh, we would like to, uh, get your permission to fill that. We've already done some preliminary recruitment, uh, efforts. Um, and I can assure you that we're trying hard to tap as diverse a, a network as possible for this position.
Any questions? Uh, move approval, uh, on favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Let's find someone, quick. So, uh, Personnel, Human Resources, question of approving the filling of the following vacancy within the Human Resources, Resources Department, a Labor and Employee Relations Specialist, Mr. Braga.
Good, good evening. Uh, my name is Ann Braga. I'm the HR Director. Um, this is my first time before you as the HR Director since, since your vote. Um, we are looking to fill the Labor and Employment Specialist position, which was also previously occupied by Margie Lally. So, um, she did not do them at the same time, but one after the other. This position is taking on a vital role for the HR office in assisting us to manage both employee relations and labor relations specifically around collective bargaining agreement, conduct and provisions. And with the hiring of an Assistant Town Council to do labor and employment, we are looking to, to have that be a cohesive unit, um, as we go to move forward to deal with labor and employment issues, um, right at the ground as, as they happen. So we're requesting, um, approval for that position to refill an existing position.
Any questions? None. Um, move approval of the, uh, Labor and Employment, Employee Relations Specialist, uh, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you. Your maiden voyage here was a success. Next, question of establishing a Newbury College Zoning Committee. Um, who's gonna handle that?
I'll, I'll start, although I think, uh, the Board is very aware of what's going on here. So, uh, as, as we all know, and as reported at the annual town meeting, the town was not the successful bidder for the Newbury College campus. There was another, um, entity selected. We're not at liberty to disclose that yet, but I think we will be very shortly because I understand that party, um, may be closing on the property as early as next week. So we'll be able to be a little bit more forthcoming about that at that time. But in anticipation of, um, of that, um, uh, we want to be able to, um, provide recommendations to our town meeting about rezoning the property to accommodate the use that this, uh, party has in mind. Um, I think we have also been very clear to disclose that this party is interested in, um, selling the town, a portion of the property. Um, and so as part of this, uh, charge, um, you know, we'll want to understand the details around that. And the committee will probably designate some folks to help negotiate, uh, the terms and conditions of that, of that sale, uh, if that proves to be, uh, what the town would like to do. So, um, this is the charge. I believe we're not quite ready yet to, uh, propose a slate of candidates for the committee. But I will say that our intent, I think, and the Board's intent was to, um, to keep a number of members from the prior, uh, Newbury College, um, Acquisition Committee and then expanding it a bit to cover the required zoning and the, um, land use issues that are required here. So, um, we think it's important to move forward on establishment, establishing this committee and, uh, getting going on, on the work of that group as soon as the closing occurs next week.
Any questions? Okay.
When, when, when might we see a proposed slate?
I thought for next week.
Maybe next week.
Is that right?
Uh, on favor, uh, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Great. Okay, this item has been postponed. Question of making appointments to the following boards and commissions. Oh, this is the last page of our agenda.
Yeah, things are moving quickly.
Well, when you postpone the entire page five.
That's true, yeah.
Um, okay, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, Peer School Building Committee, uh, that's off, right?
Yeah, we don't need.
We're gonna hold that.
Okay. Park and Recreation Commission, Pedestrian Friendly Streetlight Committee, and Council on Aging.
So, uh, I'll, I'll try to walk you through this and try to facilitate a vote. It's, it's, can be complicated. There's a lot of moving parts here. But the Zoning Board of Appeals, you began to act on, but you didn't conclude at your last meeting. Um, at that time, you voted to, uh, effectively promote an associate member, Johannes Schneider, to a, uh, a full, uh, full member slot. But you, uh, also, you did not take up the, uh, the matter of, uh, an expiring member's term. And that is Jesse Geller, who, uh, has, uh, his term has expired. And, um, so, he is interested in reappointment, but I, I would note that you also have other applicants, Deborah Brown and Paul Bell, who you have interviewed for that slot. So let's take that one first, and then obviously those candidates will continue to be considered, um, all, um, you know, for future, for the, the additional, uh, positions that are here. So, uh, what I think, I would suggest, what we've been doing the last couple of meetings is I will announce this term, uh, this, uh, this position. And each board member will express, um, if they want to reappoint Mr. Geller or, uh, appoint one of the other two, two potential applicants for this position, which is Deborah Brown or Paul Bell. Is that okay with, with all?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to announce the, um, the full member, um, that is, um, Mr. Geller's current term. Um, if I can just go down the list, uh, Mr. Fernandez?
Okay, let me just get this right, because we've done this a couple different ways before. Is this a, is this an up or down on Geller?
No.
Or we, we're stating one of the three names?
One of the three names.
Okay, Brown.
Mr. Franco?
Geller.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Geller.
Ms. Heller?
Geller.
Ms. Hamilton?
Brown.
So, um, Mr. Geller is a candidate who will be reappointed for that term. Now we move to, um, uh, the position that's being vacated by, uh, Lark Palermo. So in this case, um, it's Ms. Palermo or the two candidates that I previously mentioned, Mr. Brown or Mr. Bell. So, um, I'm gonna, again, um, this is one of the two, um, positions. So, uh, we'll have another chance to do it again. So this is for Ms. Palermo's term that expired in twenty eighteen. Mr. Fernandez?
Brown.
Mr. Franco?
Palermo.
And Mr. Chair?
Palermo.
Ms. Heller?
Palermo.
And Ms. Hamilton?
Brown.
So that, that would be, uh, Ms. Palermo, uh, has been reappointed to that position. And now we move to the position that Mr. Cmenti, Stephen Cmenti, um, holds, that has been expired since twenty eighteen. Okay, so, uh, again, um, now in this case, we have Mr. Uh, Mr. Cmenti or the, uh, or Brown or Bell, again.
Paul Bell.
Paul Bell. Excuse me. Okay, Mr. Fernandez?
Brown.
Mr. Franco?
Bell.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Bell.
Ms. Heller?
Bell.
And Ms. Hamilton?
Brown.
So, uh, Paul Bell has been appointed to, uh, fill Mr. Cmenti's expiring term.
Okay, next, um.
Next we have the Park and Recreation Commission. We have two members who's, who are, whose terms are expiring, Mr. Carroll and Ms. Bilata, uh, Bilalta. And, um, we have, um, both of those candidates interested in being reappointed as well as another applicant by the name of Stuart Celestry. So again, um, I guess I'll take them in, in order. I'm gonna take up Mr. Carroll's term. So your choices here are to reappoint Mr. Carroll or to, uh, So your choices here are to reappoint Mr. Carroll or to appoint Mr. Silvestri. Mr. Fernandez?
Carroll.
Mr. Franco?
Carroll.
Mr. Green?
Carroll.
Ms. Heller?
Carroll.
And Ms. Hamilton?
Carroll.
All right. Now you have Antonia Bilalta's term. Again, she's interested in reappointment, as well as Mr. Silvestri's interest in being appointed to the committee. Mr. Fernandez?
Bilalta.
And Mr. Franco?
Bilalta.
Chair Green?
Bilalta.
And Ms. Heller?
Bilata.
And Ms. Hamilton?
Bilalta.
Okay, so both Mr. Carroll and Ms. Bilalta have been reappointed to their terms on the commission. Pedestrian Friendly Streetlight Committee is a new committee that's comprised of some ex officio members, including the director of the Commission for Public Works or his designee, member of the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Transportation Board, the petitioner of Warren Article 22 or that petitioner's designee, two members of the Council on Aging, and up to two additional members from the public. And as it turns out, we only have two applicants for this position, Jennifer Pizak and Jesse Hefter. So perhaps we could just take a vote, somebody could move those two candidates forward.
I move Jennifer Pizak and Jesse Hefter. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
And on the Council on Aging, in this case, I believe the bylaws require that you consider recommendations for appointments by the Council on Aging by the council. And they have recommended a slate of candidates. They had a nominating committee and are urging the board to reappoint John Mulhane and Roberta Winitzer. Why don't we start there?
But this is a slate.
Yeah.
Maybe we should just ask if anyone has objections to any of them.
Okay, let me just keep going. So then, then the other, the other recommendations are associate member reappointment, Sherry Lee, and they would like to add new associate members, which I don't believe there are any limitation on those, Saul Feldman, Marcia Goldstein, and Sue Moy. So that is their proposed slate of offices.
Did you mention Yolanda Rodriguez?
And I should, I should say that Ms. Yolanda Rodriguez and Judith Chason are continuing members. Their terms are continuing.
Okay, I move that we accept and approve the slate submitted by the Council on Aging. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. That's it?
That's all I got.
Okay. I guess we have one more item, and it's a big item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last Thursday at noon, the warrant for the 2019 special town meeting closed, and we have a total of 35 articles. I can just kind of give a brief run-through of what we've got so far. The first three are kind of the traditional unpaid bills, collective bargaining, budget amendments. We have a appropriation article for four-section school to move that project forward. We have two articles around Oak Street, one filed by the board, one filed by petitioners. We have a resolution around stipends for the Select Board, resolution around pavement marking funding, legislation trying to offer senior discounts for water and sewer rates, a resolution around the real estate transfer fee, amendment to the bylaws per the moderator's recommendation in order to dissolve the Committee on Campaigns because they've done, they've served their purpose. An easement needed for an area around Carrigan Place, extinguishing a piece and then granting another piece. Two around solar, one for ground-mounted installations and one for rooftop installations. A zoning amendment around electric vehicle parking. Another one related to storefront uses within the T-Pod, the transit parking overlay district. A resolution around the e-scooter program, a resolution around open-air parking licenses and EV charging stations. Amendments to the bylaws around the definition of a lodger, so this is short-term rental legislation. An amendment to the bylaw on accessory dwelling units, another amendment to the zoning bylaw around micro-units. A general bylaw proposal for prohibiting fossil fuel infrastructure in major construction projects. That one has gotten a little bit of press attention already. Two around leaf blowers, one about the type of leaf blower allowed in the town, and the other around where you can blow your leaves. So we'll be revisiting that issue as well. An amendment to the general bylaw around the citizen complaints and the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. A new general bylaw around face surveillance, which also has gotten a little bit of attention as well. Three around the renaming of the Coolidge Corner School, one coming from the school committee, and others around the proposal for Florida Ruffin Ridley School, one for Ethel Weiss, and then another one for Robert Spurber, three separate proposals. Then we have a resolution on an economic equity advancement fund, essentially trying to direct marijuana funding in that area. Then we have another one around creating a community engagement plan. We have a resolution around the town's response to climate change. We have an amendment to the town's bylaws around terminology of chair and chairperson, another amendment to the bylaws around references to inhabitants and citizens, and then another reference in the bylaws around eligibility for memberships on boards and commissions. So altogether, 35. I had presented the board with an index that I then got some feedback on some of the ordering. So two of the resolutions that are related to appropriations have been moved up, but if the board has any further changes, otherwise the warrant is available for you to execute. You have the original articles as filed. Kate has given you the signature page that we would need. Once you set the order, then I can construct the warrant that we end up giving to the constable to distribute around town.
Any questions or suggestions in terms of the warrant articles? No? Well, I have one. Okay. Warrant article, five articles, five and six are redundant. I don't see any reason why the Select Board should be submitting this warrant article, so why don't we just take that out and let it be submitted by the other folks? Which includes Mr. Franco.
Could I get a motion on that? That would be...
So I move that we delete warrant article five and allow warrant article six to remain as the article that basically addresses this issue. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Okay.
See, I might add that the only difference between the two, so far as I can tell, is that Mr. Franco's article, or article that Mr. Franco is one of the petitioners for, notes that this, that should this be approved by town meeting, the Select Board would not be required to sell the properties. This is merely an authorization to sell. The Select Board would also determine the timing of such sale if one occurs. So that's a little more explanatory, a couple of sentences in this article description. So... Any other comments?
That will definitely get highlighted at advisory. Very thorough.
That's what I hear. Any other comments, changes, questions? Are we going to be out of here before eight?
This will be, well, this will be in early time, and then this warrant is going to cause late nights in foreseeable future.
So we will enjoy...
So soak it up while you can.
Can we think of a way to streamline the process, maybe?
Yeah. Joint hearings.
Joint hearings? I don't know.
Yeah, it's going to be fun, fun, fun.
It's a killer for everyone.
Yeah. Well, it rhymes. Fun, 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 killer for everyone. Okay. Move of approval of the warrant as amended?
Approval and execution of the warrant.
Approval and execution. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are now adjourned. Thank you.
I'm shocked. I really thought tonight was going to be really, really...